Welcome. We're live tonight at the Marion County Chamber of Commerce here at the 304 Collective in Fairmont, West Virginia. Tonight is our seventh in our series of city council candidate forums, and we're broadcasting these throughout the month of September at 7:00 PM. So be sure to follow our pages to get the notifications. We're here tonight with Phil Mason, currently representing District 7. Before we get started, we wanted to remind you that if you're here, please leave us a comment and say hello. We'd love to hear from you. Also, if you have any questions for the candidate, please leave those in the comments, and we will be sure to ask those questions after we get started with our own. We also wanted to remind everyone that when you're voting for city council, remember that every resident in the city gets to vote for all districts. So be sure to tune in to meet each candidate. With that, let's get started. Phil, why don't you give us a brief bio about yourself?
Well, Brett, first of all, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to 304 Collective for providing this opportunity for the council people in a beautiful setting. I love your studio. To be able to communicate with the citizens. With COVID-19, it has been very difficult. It's not business as usual for any of us. The city, individual, business people, the Chamber, for Collective, 304. But we get through it. We adapt, and that's what we're doing today. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. The bio of me, oh goodness, how long do we have?
As long as you need, Phil.
I'm one of 12 kids, one set of parents. I'm next to the youngest. I had a great life until my little sister came along and then ruined everything. But I'm a West Virginia boy, born and raised, educated here in the great state of West, by God, Virginia. I graduated from West Virginia University in the College of Business in 1976. Like a lot of other kids, in 1976, I was, what, 21? And couldn't wait to get out of the state. I went to the state of Washington, about as far away as you can get and still be in the lower 48. I grabbed a Master of Business while I was out there. Moved back to Ohio where I received a PhD and was fortunate enough to marry the most wonderful woman I have ever met in my life, Marie Mason. We have four children. We have lived here in Fairmont for going on three decades. The four children have all raised, born and raised here. Gone to school here. We have an excellent education system, and I will put us up against anyone. I've seen it in different states, and I've seen it here. And we're good. We have a very good education system. All four of my kids graduated from Fairmont Senior. And they're all doing pretty darn, pretty darn well, thanks to the mom.
Only the mom.
So that's, that's, that's me. I'm a financial advisor here in Fairmont. I don't think it's appropriate to mention the name, but I am a financial advisor. My wife is a chiropractor. We both have businesses here in Fairmont. To say that we're invested in Fairmont is a bit of an understatement. Four children, two businesses. She's on the west side, I'm on the east side. So I think we got Fairmont pretty well covered. So that's kind of a summary.
Great. Well, how about this one? Why did you decide to run for city council?
Well, it goes back a long ways. You know, I've always been involved. You know, one of the things that my parents taught us all was, you serve. You help other people. You get involved when you can to help your community, to help other people, individuals or otherwise. So every place I've been, I've done that. I was on the National Board of Directors of Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Served locally on the Lions Club. I've been involved with Red Cross, a lot of different things. But the deciding factor for me, I think it was in 2009? You know, I've always watched what was going on in Fairmont because I live here, and I needed to know what was happening. I saw a headline in the newspaper that said, "363% rate increase in our water rates." And that caught my attention. And I said, "What the heck is going on?" So I started paying attention a little bit more after I saw that headline. And I followed the way things were going on in the city. I saw that the firefighters, the police department, retirement funds were not being funded properly, and neither is any other municipality in the state of West Virginia, and most of them in the country. But that's no excuse. So that really gave me a pause. The person who was representing my district went to do something else. And I heard that there were applications for, to apply for the, for the open slot. I applied. They didn't choose me. So I ran against who they chose. And, and I became council member in 2014. And then re-elected in 2016, and now up in 2020. So that's, it's a little bit more than what you really asked, Brett, but that's why I...
What about, what do you think are the challenges facing Fairmont right now? And how do you hope to deal with them if re-elected?
Well, you know, there are challenges all the time. You know, the challenges today are not going to be the ones we face next year. We're going to get the challenges that we're facing today out of the way, and we'll move on as a city. The challenges that I foresee in the future, is that what, you know? I see opportunities. We've got some terrific opportunities, and we've been working very hard. First of all, it takes two or three years to figure out how in the heck the city operates. It takes two or three years to see what the ins and outs, what the departments are, what, how do you, how does council function? How do you operate with the, with the city manager? What's that person's role? What's a council member's role? You know, all of those things. It takes a while to, to figure that out. But once, once you do, then you can start thinking about things that, that we can get done. The challenges really are opportunities. We've, we've, we've got so many good things that are going on. Not just the streets that are paved, you know, that's something that, that's an easy one. But the, the rail-to-trail system is something that we must get done. We, as a city, have to be a part of this P2P, Parkersburg to Pittsburgh system. A lot of people out there will say, "Why is the rail-to-trail so important?" Well, I can tell you. There are people who, who live for the weekends or a day off to get on the trail with their kids, their friends or family. And they travel. They take the bikes, they go hiking, they, they camp. They spend money. And that's why we want that to go through Fairmont. We're applying for grants. We, we have some things lined up. And you're going to see something happening in a very near future where at least a temporary trail line will be coming through the city. I think you're familiar. And that's, we're close to getting at least a temporary through here. And then my idea, my dream is to put in the pedestrian bridge over the, you know, the pillars that are still in the river and bring it over to Palatine. And that way, people can walk across, ride the bike across, or whatever. So that's not really a challenge, but it's an opportunity that we have to, we have to push. Another opportunity is the Sharon Steel property. My goodness, that's a diamond out there. I cannot wait. Anytime you're dealing with government, whether it be local, state, federal, whomever, it takes forever to get anything through them. You know, it took me a while to adjust. I don't think I still have. Because I'm in the private sector, and we say, "That's great. Let's do it." And then we get, we go. And in government, you just, it's very frustrating. But Sharon Steel is that close. The Sharon Steel property out by the Armory, the new Armory. It's very close to getting down. We've got, we have received some of the certifications. There's a smaller portion that still needs to be tested, needs to have some drilling, and then it's going to be open. I hope, I believe, that in the next year, we'll be ready to go out for requests for proposals. There are entities out there right now who are waiting, just like we are, to get the go-ahead from ExxonMobil, the feds, the state, to move. The local government worked on our part, and we're waiting on them. So that's going to be a great boom for Fairmont. And it's exciting. It's very exciting. Not only with that development, that developed that property, but it will also bring in ancillary businesses and opportunities. I can see homes upon the old porfirian. That could happen, and I'm hopeful that it will. That's, that's something I look forward to seeing.
That's great.
And I'm happy to have been a part of it.
What about your thoughts on the Fairmont Human Rights Commission? How do you see the group interacting with the city and the council moving forward?
Well, the Human Rights Commission. As you might know, I served on the committee. I'm happy that we have the Human Rights Commission. We needed it. I have concerns about it. When I agreed to serve on the committee, I thought, I thought our primary purpose would be to assist all minorities who feel that they've been discriminated against, or there's outright prejudice, or that there is some kind of an institutional discrimination or prejudice. And that's what I envisioned when I agreed to sort of on that committee. I'm not sorry that I did. I'm very happy that I did. I learned some things, learned some things that, that I didn't know about Fairmont. But also, there are opportunities to address some things through the commission that I do know about Fairmont. My children's friends, you know, fortunately, they come to our home. We go to their games, you know, we talk. And they, they give us pretty much a straightforward description of how it is in school, whether there's anyone that looks like me, that's the child speaking, at the school that I can go talk to if I have a concern or a problem. Or is there, you know, I know of friends who, I say, "Well, why don't you go, go to the Board of Education, or the university, or the city, or the hospital?" Thank God, we've got the hospital figured out, but that's another issue. But, and they said, "Well, they won't, you know, they're not going to pay attention to me." And, and I said, "Well, why?" And, you know, it's one of those. So I wanted to be involved with that for those reasons. I think the, I suggested, when I looked at the, the, the whole picture of the commission, and I saw that the committee members, the commission members weren't staggered. Before we approved it as a council, I told the former city manager, "You need to fix this. You need to change that before you bring it to council. Otherwise, we're going to have to bring it back. The membership needs to be staggered, three here, three there, three there, three there." And they said, "Well, they'll, they'll figure it out." So that didn't get fixed. We're going to figure that out.
Well, we figured it out last night. We need to bring it back to council and change that. We agree.
And that's always, I've known it was coming. I knew it had to. It was just a matter of time. So I wish there were more minority people on the commission. I think there's a misperception out there that the commission, the Human Rights Commission is for a singular purpose, which it is not. If it was for a singular purpose, I wouldn't have been a part of it. I considered it for anyone, anyone who's being discriminated against. Nobody should experience that. But the true purpose and the real, the real function is to assist anyone, any minority, or someone who's old, like me, who's prejudiced against, because you're old, then, you know, that's part of the purpose of that commission. So it can't be pigeonholed. It shall not be pigeonholed. We just simply need to get different people involved and broaden the scope.
Something that you said in your bio that stuck with me is, is what do you think the importance is about keeping young people in West Virginia? You know, this is a major problem that we have in our state, and especially Fairmont. What do you think we can do to keep young people in our state and in our city?
Well, I think we're doing it. You can take me as an example. You know, I ran away from West Virginia. I had an opportunity noted. I wanted to get away from my brothers and have my own life. But, and then I spent the next 20 years trying to get back to West Virginia. And you've heard that a lot. There are people out there who leave West Virginia because they think there's no opportunity. Well, that's bolder dash. There are opportunities here in West Virginia, here in Fairmont. There are people who are in businesses, organizations, corporations, who are looking for good people. I can, I can tell you, I have one of my children, straight A student, by the way. Thank God, he takes after his mother, and majoring in finance. He wants to open a business here in Fairmont. He said, "I want to come, after I'm done." He's already been approached by New York, Boston, Texas, and other places. He said, "I want to do a business in Fairmont." So the opportunities are here. We simply, we need, we need to say more often, "We want you. We need you. We love you. Stay with us. Stay here. And we will help you. We'll help you get started." I know the Chamber will do that. Help people get on their feet and do a business. So you don't need to leave anymore. It's changed a lot since 1976, when I ran away to the state of Washington.
We've got a couple of questions already from some viewers, and then we'll check and see if we have any Facebook. What about this one? What do you believe is the single most compelling issue facing Fairmont right now?
Well, you know, a single most compelling issue facing Fairmont? Current issues are not compelling. We're going to get past the current issues. There is nothing that is a, a problem right now that I see that we can't deal with. We do not have a serious problem. Fairmont is a great city. It's a great city to raise your kids. It's a great city to live in, to, to recreate, and to live. I can live here safely and, and not worry so much about my children. But again, that's because my wife raised them the right way. So the issues that we have, I really, I really see the most compelling issue is, let's not be frustrated with the pace with which our city takes advantage of opportunities. Sharon Steel's going to come. We're going to get the pedestrian bridge. We're going to get the rail-to-trail through here. Already, you know, even during COVID-19, we have businesses open up here. Already, you know, even during COVID-19, we, we have businesses open up here. Downtown, there's a new restaurant, another restaurant opened. I think it's okay to say their names. The Mama de Roma, a very good Italian food restaurant. I think they'll compete with Muriel's. They're that good. Sorry, Rocco. The, the Green Leaf has reopened in the middle of COVID-19. There's a hair salon across from the Veterans Square that opened. You know, there are, there are things going on, there are things happening, but, you know, let's not get down on ourselves. We are a great town. We have great people. We have honest leaders. The issues that we are facing now, we will put behind us and we'll be a, a lot better. And we'll learn as a result of some of the things that we've gone through and we'll go through. So I, I see nothing but good stuff in the future. I see, I'll tell you something I'd like to see, the Doggone Box Factory gotten rid of. I would love to see that, you know, we've been concentrating on, you know, we've gotten rid of, between the private sector and the, and the city government, we've gotten rid of almost 200 dilapidated buildings. Now that's, we started with budgeting $300,000 a year to, to buy buildings. And that's a heck of a process to, again, that's government. There are steps that we have to go through that a normal person doesn't have to go through in order to buy a property and then tear it down and then try to sell it to adjacent property owners. But we've done that. And other, other private owners have started tearing down structures that needed to be torn down. So over 200 bad buildings have already been inventoried and torn down. So that's, that's a very, very good thing. Now, we need to put things in the place of those buildings that we tore down, whether it be a garden, or another little home, or whatever it is. I'm all for community gardens.
I think we're all for that.
Yeah.
What about if you received a million dollar grant, as we all would love to, to use for the city any way you wanted? What would you do with it and why?
Is that for me to use or for the city?
Well, I think you could take it either way, probably.
Okay.
I think probably the city.
Okay, if I, okay, I'm going to take it as if I receive. If I received a million bucks, what I would do is pull out my notes from a meeting that I had with the former city manager and the director of McPark, Marion County Parks and Recreation. We had a meeting. The city manager at that time committed to a million dollars, a million dollars to build a rec center. And, and I was excited. I thought, now we're getting someplace. We're going to build it either at Wimmo Park, and now there's a, and I've not given up on the rec center. We were going to build it, propose that it be built at Wimmo Park, or now it's possible we could entertain a proposal to build it out at the old Sharon Steel property, which is being repaired and brought back. So I would say, okay, city, here's proof that this promise was made, and here's someone who was in the same meeting that this promise was made. I will give up my million if the city puts another million on top of it. And then we'll go out and raise a couple million from the private sector, or from the county, or from the Board of Education, or whomever. And we'll build a nice recreation center. It doesn't have to be something that is for the whole state or even the region, but for Fairmont and Marion County. You know, have kids come in from all around the county and use the facility. I mean, we need it. We need a place for, that, that kids don't have to get up at 4:00 in the morning in order to go practice someplace, you know? Whether it be soccer or, or archery, I, I don't care. But let's, let's put a structure together where it's convenient, safe, and dependable, and efficient here in Marion County. So that's what I would do with a million bucks.
Well, I think that is all of our prepared questions. Any other issues that you'd like to, to talk about?
Wow, that went by pretty fast. Yeah, you know, one, one thing that I have preached for as long as anyone would listen, the city of Fairmont can't do everything by itself. I will be opposed to unnecessarily raising taxes, fees, other ways of bringing money into the city coffer. We can't do it by ourselves. But we can do it if we create partnerships. I'm big on partnerships. I, I've done partnerships all of my life. Remember, I'm one of 12. You got to get a partnership or you don't survive in that kind of a family. I'm a firm believer that we need to, there are people in the private sector who have the means, who have the interests, and all they need is to be shown some dreams, some vision, and be asked to participate. There are corporations in our region who have not been asked to help us accomplish specific projects. I had meetings set up right before COVID-19 with two major entities in our region to do just that, to submit proposals from the city. Then COVID-19 hit, and it, it, it just didn't seem, number one, functional to get together. But number two, seemingly to start asking for money when other corporations are still trying to find their way through this thing called COVID. So if there's anything that I would like to end on, if that's it, I, I would like to see us form partnerships. Again, the, between the city, the chamber, the chamber members, the corporate world, individuals, the Board of Education, the county. We were making good strides in developing a bridge between the city and the county. And then COVID hit, and everything started falling apart. We stopped meeting, you know, it was difficult, and it just wasn't, the excitement wasn't there. But it was a lot better, Brett, than it had been for a long time. For some reason, for a long time in the past, I've never been able to figure this out, there's been a conflict between the city and the county. I have no idea why. I don't think anyone knows. But we set out to change that, to start a bridge, to get some partnerships, communication. Randy Elliott, Ernie, Rick, and they were great to come with us, to start talking about things we can do together. And that's a perfect example of creating partnerships and working together to actually get some stuff done. I'm not one to just sit around at meetings. If people want to meet just to meet, then I'll go do something else. But if we can get something done, if we can actually make a move to accomplish something, then I'm all in. And I, there are a lot of other people who are the same way.
That's great. Well, first, Phil, thank you for being with us tonight. We appreciate you coming out to chat with us a little bit.
Thank you, Brett. I appreciate the time. And I think, I appreciate the chamber and collective 304 for the opportunity.
Wonderful. And we certainly want to make sure that everybody gets out to vote on behalf of the Marion County Chamber of Commerce and 304 Collective. Thanks for tuning in and have a great evening.